And if we might, let's go ahead and pull up our presentation for this evening. I'll just kind of frame this and then I'm going to turn it over to Celia to walk through the specifics. I'm also going to turn off my video for just a minute. We updated some of the maps on this from the stormwater kind of study areas that we sent you yesterday. And I want to send a couple of, I'll be sending a couple of those versions to you here shortly.
There we go.
Okay, so Celia, if you want to go to the second slide, that'd be great. Okay, so what we wanted to do, and I know I shared some of this yesterday when we sent most of the, the presentation, you've already had kind of an opportunity to look, look at. But this is a little bit different format of a work session than maybe most that we've had. Definitely different from our budget work sessions where we come into the work session at this point with at least a recommended draft or fairly well structured and, and laid out plan. This is a lot more what I would refer to as kind of the sausage making that's going to happen as we work through putting together a plan. So I don't want anyone to feel anxious about feeling like there's a lack of detail. There's going to be lots more detail that comes and we aren't going to get through all of this tonight. But what we wanted to do was just very quickly, I don't think there's anybody, any members of the public that are on our work session that didn't hear the August presentation. But we included a few slides in this presentation, just sort of high level recap of what we presented to you in August. What we have been doing since that August presentation is working on, you'll remember, we outlined a number of factors or considerations that will influence our street program costs, including things like sidewalks, streetlights, ADA considerations and stormwater being the largest of those. So we'll, we'll be spending some time tonight, kind of walking through the analysis and the work that we, and I should say Celia, has done on, on this with some of our consultants over the last month, providing you with some of our staff recommendations. Obviously looking for some input and guidance and concurrence there. And then we'll, we'll move into kind of just some potential 10-year scenarios for a street program. And, and what I want to be clear about, and we'll talk more about this as we get there and get to the end, is that, you know, we're kind of working our way through a series of many decision points, if you will, that are ultimately going to get us to this final recommended street program. And so when we start to move into the potential 10-year scenarios, we understand there is a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts and pieces in this still. But we wanted to start to get this information in front of you based on some of the feedback that we heard in August, so that we can continue to sort of test those assumptions, let you give us some direction, and then we will continue in the weeks and the months ahead. And, and we'll plan to, you know, just continue. And then when we get to the end of our presentation, we'll kind of talk through about those next steps and what, what we can anticipate. So we've done, there's a tremendous amount of work that has been done. It may not feel like that so much this evening. But there's a lot that still has to happen, so please, I don't want anyone to feel like this is our, our final, you know, work product. And as always, please just stop us along the way and ask questions. You know, we've, again, if we were sitting here in the council chambers, it would definitely be a, let's all roll up our sleeves and, you know, put our heads together on this. So we'll try to do that as best we can virtually. And with that, I'm going to shut off my video for a minute and send you all some updated maps. And let Celia take it from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Luckily, we're starting a little bit earlier tonight on this presentation. So hopefully we'll have time that you can go and ask any questions as we go along. So a quick recap of what we talked about last time. We've got 89.3 city maintained streets. You can see the majority are our local or residential streets. And as you recall, last time we talked a little bit about the classification. So our arterial streets are the streets that are really designed to move traffic throughout the city. So those will be primarily our cars routes, but you know, Johnson Drive, Lamar, Knoll, Row, et cetera. And then the collectors can either be in, commercial collectors that are in the downtown areas that move more traffic, but aren't to the arterial level, or the residential collectors such as a 56 or a 55th and a 58th street. And then the rest of those are locals. The collectors move the local traffic to the arterials. And I kind of use local and residential kind of interchange, so just to let you know that. Last time you saw this graph that shows our network, our overall pavement condition index is 56.1, which correlates to a very low fare. And this is based on our STANTEC data that was performed in 2017. And last time we kind of went through, you know, how they drove the truck and they used the lasers and all this scientific process to determine what our rating is. And that's really used when we determine what kind of treatment and how often to do it. So if you take a look at the, at the graph, primarily we have the most streets in our very poor category. About 49% are satisfactory or good streets, meaning not a lot either, you don't have to do work right away, or you may do a crack seal, but they're in really good condition. Then our fair are about 23%, where it needs some work, but it, you know, we're not getting into major rehabilitation. And then 49% of our streets are unsatisfactory. So these maps were presented last time. And next time you see these maps, I'm going to go ahead and create those through a GIS, because these are the maps that are generated through the STANTEC program. So hopefully you'll be able to see more of the names of the streets and get a better idea of what these streets actually are. But the one on, the map on the left shows the good and satisfactory. So you see, you know, the streets and what their PCI rating are and their locations. As you see, kind of the primary core is the east side of town. And that central area has a lot of very serious or very poor streets. The west side seems to be, you know, mainly more fair streets. And then that kind of the east area has some more fair streets too. So it's kind of interesting when you take a look at, I don't know if that's the way the city was built at different ages or how that worked. So then, once you take the PCI and as you know that we went ahead, back, I don't know, a couple of years ago before I was here, we started to mill, mill a street and found out that we didn't have enough asphalt to mill it. So that was when the decision was made to go ahead and collect boring, so we know what's out there. And so we can determine a treatment. So what we found out is that three quarters of our streets just don't have the asphalt depth that is recommended per APWA standard. So typically for a local, they recommend an eight inches of asphalt. For a collector, 10 inches, and for an arterial, 12 inches. And that's primarily, you know, the arterials carry the heavy traffic, daily traffic, a lot more of a load, a lot more trucks, et cetera. But you still need, even though the locals don't care as much, you still have the bus traffic and the trash traffic and occasional construction trucks as we saw last summer on Lamar. And so it's important to still have that base, because if you don't over time, you're going to start to see that deterioration. So based on the PCI and the boring data, we are recommending various types of rehabilitation. So the do nothing are obviously the streets that were just done and that are in really good condition. And then the crack fill is recommended where they're still in really good condition or satisfactory. But we want to fill those cracks so that the moisture doesn't get down into the pavement. And what happens is when the water gets down into the pavement, it starts to form a pothole. Then it seeps down and it gets into the asphalt base. And when that starts to deteriorate, you're, you're going to see more cracks, like the alligator cracking and the edge cracking up to the surface. And if you try to put a surface treatment or, or an overlay over it, it's going to look for a while, but then you're going to see all those distresses come back up. So it's important to, you know, address that and, and do the crack seal. And that's recommended every three years. The chip seal, we don't have as many chip seals. Those are the streets that are in pretty good condition, but just need a little treatment. And at some point, I know we talked a little bit about chip seal last time, and we may want to recommend that even though the chip seal is very cost effective, there can be constructability, as we talked about last time, where sometimes if it's later on in the year, the, the chips and the oil don't adhere to the surface. So you've got these bare spots or, and you've got to brush the chips. They're getting better and better with the different types of treatment. Like Overland Park has a, I think it's a granite seal that's getting better and better. But if we want to be a little more uniform, we may want to just decide that we're just not going to do the chip seal and do the U-Bass for the local streets to have a more uniform look. That way, we don't have to have certain citizens say, why did you chip seal here? I wanted the U-Bass. So that would be about $2 million and maybe later on in the presentation. Or if you want to give input on that now, we'd be happy to talk about it. So the U-Bass were recommend, oh, go ahead, Debbie, did you have a question? I think you're muted.
No, I'm sorry. What is the differential between the U-Bass and the chip seal per, per, I don't know if it's, you do square foot or whatever the, the measurement is?
It's about two and a half million, or two and a half times more than the U-Bass. And the spreadsheet that I think Laura is going to send you, it has the unit rates, but it's kind of broken down into chip seal with 5% base repair. So it's a little bit depending on the base repair, but it's about two and a half times more. So in the table I'm going to show you coming up, you can see the chip seal costs. And then we can talk about the 2 million more it would be. So the locals were recommending a U-Bass treatment and that, we were very successful with that on Lamar. And really that's a treatment that everybody's starting to use. So we feel really good that that could be used in neighborhoods very well. As far as the arterials, right now we're showing a Millan overlay. But as we know with Lamar, we could also do the U-Bass. One thing I like about the Millan overlay, it is more expensive, but it's going to last a lot longer. So if we have a busy street, we may want to do the Millan overlay on it. But there's a couple of streets, you know, that we're doing with joint cities and they just do U-Bass. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead, you know, on Knoll and I think Row, those cities that we're joining in want to do the U-Bass. So we're going to do that for those streets. So I think it's kind of one of those things where we can make that decision then. You know, U-Bass has been around for a while, but it'll be nice to kind of see how that performs on Lamar with more traffic. And so far, you know, the cities that are using it are pretty pleased with it. So I think it's going to be a good treatment, but it's always good to take a look at these treatments and, you know, adjust as new technology comes in. Then the majority of the, the large red bold are the full depth reconstruction or what STANTEC calls remove and replace AC. So those are the ones that, you know, because of the insufficient depth, we're recommending when we do the project to go ahead and add in the sufficient asphalt, depending on the type of street. And that's going to be expensive, but once we do that, we're going to bring our streets back to base, what I'm calling kind of baseline. And then, you know, that's going to help us in the future that we're going to have a lot less maintenance costs. But it's also going to support the traffic and we're going to see a longer life once we do that. So here's the table I was talking about, and I know you saw this last time. So you can see the different costs and those are really based on bid tab costs. You can see the chip seal. We have various types of base repair. And that was based on STANTEC taking a look at the crack loading and determining that probably needs about this much base repair. So it could be lower. Hopefully we're a little bit conservative, so we won't have that much, but we'll probably be higher and lower on certain ones. So you can see as Debbie, as you had mentioned, the chip seal, right now the cost would be about 343. But based on adding in the, the cost, I think it'd be about 2 million, million more to go ahead and do chip seal.
To do U-Bass?
U-Bass, sorry.
Yeah, so when, so when you're saying that, you're saying that if you were to elect, so as a general rule, U-Bass versus chip seal is two and a half times, as a treatment method is two and a half times more expensive. And and this, these numbers that we're looking at here though, are reflective of only this, the snapshot in time today as it relates to the treatments that would be applied to these streets. Right? So chip seal forever and ever and ever may not cost $343,000, but that's, that's in today's kind of standards. Celia will tell you, it took me a while to get my head around this chart, so.
So right now, this is immediate needs. If we had $39 million, what would we do to our streets? This is what we do. Of course, that doesn't make sense, you know, as far as budgetary, but that's what, that's the treatments that we would need today identified, you know, based on our data.
Just a quick question. Based on the two and a half times the U-Bass over the chip seal, what's the longevity or the sustainability of the U-Bass over the chip seal over a lifetime of the road?
You know, the chip seal can, you know, I have that in my presentation. I think I kind of worked with a contractor about that. I mean, they both have good lives, they both have good life cycles. I mean, the good thing about chip seal, nobody really likes it too well, but it really, it provide, it seals the street and it also provides structural. So some of those streets that we see in town have chip seals. There's a lot of flaws underneath the surface, but it's kind of protected some of the moistures. So what I, what I said is chips, well, what I said here is a chip seal about five to seven years and a U-Bass about eight to 10.
Okay. And part of it, is it fair to say, Celia, that U-Bass is still relatively new enough treatment type? That we're still, I mean, there's still some, some consideration about, you know, how it performs. And then do, am I remembering correctly that at some point in time that the U-Bass paving equipment was not, was too large to go into some residential neighborhoods?
So U-Bass has been around a long time, but it was primarily used on federal highways. Cities just started doing the U-Bass in, you know, in, in their streets. And so it's been proven on highways. So I think it's a proven method. It just hasn't been used, you know, in cities now. A lot of cities, that's all they do is U-Bass. I mean, they're very pleased with it, so I think it's going to be good. What you're referring to is that we've talked to some various contractors, you know, trying to, if we, if we develop a street program and group this, these projects together, we want to make sure that we get the best bids as possible. So we found out that Superior Bowen, who does, who did the Lamar, they've got the very large U-Bass that, that they can't use in local neighborhoods. And then we have Mackinanny that has the smaller ones that can be used in smaller neighborhoods. So what we, what we didn't want to do is, you know, set up a program so that we only had one contractor bidding. But as long as we have a mix of work, it sounds like that they would just sub out the work that, you know, that they don't have the equipment for, or even go ahead and buy it. So originally we were concerned and they were like, okay, that probably works for us to be able to do the treatments we want and still get good prices. So the curb and the sidewalk, we talked about this last time. But what we did is STANTEC had developed those maps back in 2017 that were condition maps that said, you know, this street has good, fair or poor curb or sidewalk. And so it really gave an overall rating. It didn't, you know, show the areas of bad spots that need to be replaced. And so we took a look at some of those representative streets. Didn't walk all the streets, didn't have time to. But, you know, at some point in the design phase, of course, we're going to do that. But determined, you know, well, the good streets probably have about 25% curb repairing it and it could go up or down, so hopefully that's conservative. The fair is about 50, the poor is about 90. And then we've got the full depth reconstruction. So that's kind of how we made our assumptions. And then when we go into the design of it, you know, we'll, we'll actually walk it and get the really good quantities. So that's how we assumed those costs. Just a minute. Unfortunately, when you saw the table last time, the cost was 35.8 and it's gone up to 39.2 approximately, which I never like to go up. But what happened is that for the full depth reconstruction projects, when we were originally doing our curb cost, we were basing it on condition. We didn't know what streets would have the, the full depth reconstruction. So we just assumed a curb cost based on those ratings. Then once we were looking at the table, realized, well, if you do full depth reconstruction, you're removing more asphalt and the curb has got to come out, because it's, you're removing it underneath the asphalt. So that has to be 100% replacement. So unfortunately, that's gone up about $4 million.
So Celia, this chart, this includes both curbs and existing sidewalks, is that right? But not new sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're going to talk about that in an upcoming slide. So sidewalks, good segue, Solly. So before we get into the bones of the street preservation program, there's some factors and some decisions that we're looking to have input from council or consensus on, because once we have these, you know, these building blocks decisions made, it's going to be a lot easier to develop our program. So our program is currently recommending replacing or repairing existing sidewalks as part of the street project. So if you have a settled sidewalk, if you have a, you know, a slip trip issue or a cracked sidewalk, you're going to, you're going to go ahead and fix those panels. But the big question is, so many of our sidewalks don't have, or so many of our streets don't have any sidewalk. So if we were building it new today, we'd go ahead and install it. So, you know, that's a big decision. We have so much money that we need to put into maintaining what we have. Doesn't make sense to install all new sidewalks. And so you know, some of the sidewalk concerns is when you install a sidewalk, and this is kind of based on some of my experience in the past. You know, everybody wants a sidewalk, but a lot of people don't want it on their side. And especially in these established neighborhoods, there's big trees, there's utilities. A lot of times the, the lots aren't as deep. And so even though the sidewalk goes in the right of way, you know, people are like, you're taking my yard and they're really upset about it. And so what staff is recommending is that we don't just carte blanche install new sidewalks on all streets, that we develop a standalone sidewalk plan that really focuses on where are new sidewalks? Where should they be that direct people to schools, to activity centers, to parks, et cetera? And so that's a way of kind of, you know, focusing on maintaining what we have, but also looking overall at walkability and really putting our money, you know, as efficiently as we can. And that's something I talked to our new planner, Caitlin, about. And she's done a lot of that at Mark and she's really excited about that concept. So that is our staff recommendation. And I'm looking forward to hearing your input on, on, on what you think about that recommendation.
I personally like that recommendation, because I agree. I think that people are very resistant. We have a lot of mature trees and I think it's best to kind of do it the way you're, you're recommending.
Yeah, I want to hear more about the trees and maybe see some examples, you know, because I personally would be in favor of sidewalks in my neighborhood, but not if it meant losing our, all our street trees. So I think getting some more details on that sort of information before we dive further in. And maybe looking at some other factors other than supplementing existing connectivity. For example, most of the neighborhoods south of Shawnee Mission Parkway, you know, lack both the connectivity to downtown, but also don't have sidewalks if you're just walking around, you know, big chunks of Ward 4. So that would be a concern of mine as well.
I would say that looking at the obstacle or the, the issue we're dealing with, which is how to maintain the infrastructure we have, I would say, let's get a handle on getting the infrastructure we do have up to a, whatever level, whatever metric we decide to use before adding new infrastructure. I think we have enough money that can be spent on repairing what we have versus, so I like the idea of carving off the, the sidewalk as a separate, as a separate issue and, and looking at that as separate from the streets and moving forward on streets.
Okay.
Celia, Hillary here. And I'd like to, and I understand the majority of sidewalks would be wrapped into the street program and the street projects kind of as they come. But I still think it's valuable to have some standalone sidewalk dollars to repair as needed in a prioritized way, so that, you know, as sidewalk issues come up, we can replace those without waiting five years for a project.
And so I know you had mentioned that last time, Hillary. And so that is one of our topics that we have listed that Laura is going to talk about at the end of a recommendation to, do we want to do that? Because that could also apply to curb where we have a decent street, but really bad curb. And so if we had a little pot of money to put forward to it, I mean, I think that would really help our infrastructure. So as far as streetlights, you know, looking at a comprehensive program, let's put in sidewalks, let's put in streetlights, let's do everything that we can. But it's also a matter of taking a look at what we have. And to my knowledge, I don't receive a lot of complaints about streetlights and people saying it's too light or it's too dark. What I have heard one concern about is LED lights that we put in. So my understanding is that what we do is we have our contractor who maintains our streetlights. And when a light bulb goes out, they replace it with the standard high pressure sodium, the yellow streetlights that normally everybody's used to seeing. But if the head goes out, they go ahead and replace it with an LED fixture. And so as a council, I don't know that we formally decided what type of LED. And really a lot of it's a matter of preference. But there's various lighting standards. There's the warmer, there's the cooler, there's a different type of LED. So what we're recommending is that we don't, you know, kind of like sidewalks. So let's, let's look at streetlights as a separate entity. Let's take a look at, you know, maybe we look at what kind of LED if we want to use those. I mean, they're most energy effective, you know, they have a 60% cost saving. So it makes sense from an energy standpoint to do it. Do we want to look at what kind of LED do we want? Do we just want to replace one when it goes out? Or do we want to replace the block so it has more uniform look? And so there's some of those factors that go into that. So we're kind of recommend, recommending, you know, as an asset management, let's also take a look at streetlights, but let's don't combine this into the street program. And looking for your input or discussion on that topic as well.
Celia? This is Trent. I would be in favor of being able to, to do like a block at a time of replacing with LEDs. I know you and I have talked about those before. I know, and we'll probably talk about this more too. But I don't like the idea of just replacing one at a time and kind of being reactive to that. I think it makes sense for us to kind of start moving the envelope, being a little bit more proactive, not only from an energy perspective, but just from a sustainability perspective and even aesthetics, like you were mentioning. So it would be my hope that we'd be able to, you know, not only replace the ones that go out, but do a few surrounding ones at a time too with, with LED ones to continue to ultimately get us to a goal where we're all of it is LED in the city. That would be my wish.
Okay. And one thing we may want to evaluate, can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Is, you know, several years ago, we did, we issued debt to purchase our entire streetlight system from KC P&amp;L. And when we did that, it resulted in about 120, immediately about $120,000 of savings to the general fund budget. So it, it made a lot of sense financially at the time that we made that decision. And then obviously, streetlights were about a $200,000 expense at the time. So $120,000 immediately. And then about $80,000 of that was dedicated to debt service. That debt is nearing the point at which it will retire. And so perhaps in listening to you all and kind of some thoughts around streetlights, we look at, can we marry up the retirement of that existing debt? we look at, can we marry up the retirement of that existing debt? And, and opportunities that, you know, that we might have to put together something that was less reactive, as council member Voltinghouse has said, that might look at larger segments of, you know, replacing with that ability to continue to realize energy efficiencies if we were doing that replacement with LEDs. So just a thought.
Can I say something?
Yes.
The, um, for the facility conservation improvement program, which we hope to bring forward soon, to, or to you actually, um, in November, we would be, we are asking our contractors that were touring through the buildings to improve facility energy improvements to also include our streetlights. And we talked with the, um, last contractor who came through about the state that the poles are in, because it's not just simply a matter of replacing the heads, but that the whole infrastructure is quite aged. And so whether or not it pencils to be part of the FCIP, we'll have to wait and see. But at this point, we say keep it on the table and we'll have to see what they bring back. And then we can keep talking about the, the right funding mechanism to do whatever level we thought was appropriate. But just to let everyone know, we're including that in the initial conversations.
Yeah, I agree that the light poles are pretty old and, and kind of falling apart. In fact, didn't one fall over the other day?
And I know, yeah, and some in newer areas, you know, they would just, they would upgrade or swap out, but we're talking about a more wholesale change.
Yeah, I also think that we need to think about light pollution as well. So I don't, I know that a lot of our new lights along Johnson Drive were down, down facing so that it didn't produce light pollution. And I didn't know if we had an opportunity to look at some options for, uh, the style of street light that we're looking at.
I think the temperature of the bulbs can make a big difference on that too. And I know I've heard from some residents that they don't like how bright some of the newer ones have been. But, uh, I think you can still, I know that they make LED bulbs that are just as energy efficient, that maybe have a little bit, um, not as bright of a, a temperature or, you know, daylight kind of light that they give off more of the yellow tint, so.
And, and at another city I worked at, we kind of went through the same discussion. We actually installed some different types of streetlight poles and different lighting and had people go by and take a look at it. And so, um, that's something, you know, we probably wouldn't install it here, but we could install some different bulbs as test cases if we wanted to. And Nick is exactly right. There's various types of lighting. And sometimes when you've had that old, um, high pressure sodium and then the LED is installed, everyone thinks it's brighter where it's really shining down and not out. But it's just a different look that people aren't used to. There are shields that you can put on the LED lights to kind of keep them more down. So if it happens to shine in someone's, you know, um, bedroom, you can do that too. So there's a lot of different things that we can do on LED lights. But we're, we're recommending, you know, kind of an ongoing as part of our asset management. Let's don't complicate the streets with this. It's something that we can definitely do as standalone.
Can you talk a little bit about the wiring, the utility, uh, itself in underground wiring?
In relation to?
The street.
That condition it is?
Yeah.
I don't even know, but you know, whenever, um, another city that I was with purchased the KC P and L lights, they did have issues with that older equipment and lighting and electric that need to be replaced. Probably have to talk to our, um, maintenance contractor to find out. I know Brent does, and Brent, feel free to chime in if you want, but Brent, you know, works with them on the maintenance and they have a list of things they could do. So it'd be interesting to find out, you know, if they're seeing those issues and how much replacement they're having to do on those kind of things.
Okay. I, I'm, um, in concert with Trent, let's do block, you know, block by block if we're going to do it.
Yeah. Okay.
Celia, I, quick question. I think it makes sense to, you know, have it standalone like any other asset. But I am curious, um, how often the streetlights are involved in a, in a street, a large street project, you know? So what percentage of the time are we having to visit the streetlight piece in a, in a large project?
On the newer, you know, like of course Johnson Drive, we're putting in all new ones in the standard type. But in the neighborhoods, I think that we've used the old Cobra heads. You know, some cities have gone away from the Cobra heads because they're just bright in one area and they're putting in those smaller lights that have more lighting. But, um, that would be very expensive for us to do. You know, we'd have to do the wiring and the controlling and all new poles. And so even though the Cobra heads aren't as attractive and probably don't provide the lighting from a cost standpoint anyway, you know, we may want to lead those. If we do find one in a project and it's, you know, it does have an issue, I think we could replace it. But, um, I don't hear a lot of issues about the, uh, streetlights. Brent, are you on that you would like to, do you have any additional information to provide on that?
Yeah, um, I mean, the most streetlights we've replaced lately are any cars or capital projects. We do full replacement of the streetlights. But anything on the residential street program side, um, we've never touched the streetlights in general. If there is one like City said, that's fallen over or rusted out and it looks like it's going to go, we'll call our contractor in to replace it, but we never tie it into the project itself. So basically when we have matching funds is when we've done streetlight replacement as to this point.
I think it's also fair to say that we've done it with full depth reconstruction. And because we've not been in the neighborhoods with, you know, the full depth reconstruction projects, that, that that's also part of the reason why we, we may see limited streetlight activity throughout the neighborhoods as well.
Well, one thing I was going to say is if that we have a project and we know that there is no lighting or very little, you know, that's something that we may say, hey, you know, what would it cost to do that? And maybe, you know, discuss that option. So I don't think we would just completely ignore streetlights if we see an issue and we have an opportunity, um, to do that. But as far as just wholesale replacing and, you know, I don't know that we would, you know, necessarily, recommend doing it completely with the street program.
I think Foxridge has been, the first phase of Foxridge has probably been our most dramatic, where we transitioned from essentially no streetlights to streetlights. And we had a lot of really positive feedback. But yes, I mean, Johnson Drive, Martway, Foxridge, Brent's absolutely right on the larger arterial, you know, cars, projects, we have done streetlight replacement as a part of those.
Thank you. And, and one other thought regarding LED lights, and I like Trent's idea. I would recommend that, um, we look at maybe starting with outside of our residential streets and, um, in follow-up to Nick's comments. I don't know how much, you know, everyone here knows about, about, um, LED lights affecting people's sleep, but there's a lot of evidence out there that, um, shows that people's sleep is dramatically influenced by blue lights, LED lights, et cetera. So maybe we could look at starting, I'm getting into the weeds, but maybe we could look at starting, you know, on our arterial streets or, you know, kind of outside the residential piece if we, if we try to start replacing.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Do you mind if I say one thing real quick?
Of course not.
So with our contractor, just so everybody's aware, um, when they replace now with LED heads, that's in our service contract. So there's no additional cost to the city. It's just a monthly fee. So if we started trying to do three or four in a row or one street, there's going to be a pretty drastic increase to that cost. So right now it's a level pay and when their replacement doesn't cost the city any more than if they go out or they don't.
So keeping that in mind, if we set aside a pot of money, you know, then we could work with our contractor to replace a certain amount, whether, you know, maybe outside the con, the contract. But yeah, that's a good point to bring up, Brent. Okay, so, um, ADA considerations. I just wanted to point out that the costs don't include, um, if we have a street where we're, you know, if you do anything beyond what's considered more of a surfaced or, you know, not a major rehab, a major treatment, then you need, you don't need to address ADA. But if you do anything like a melan overlay above a U-bass, you need to. Not that we don't want to address ADA, but sometimes, um, it's very costly. So for example, on Lamar, the decision was made that we couldn't get that project done if we went in and addressed the sidewalks with ADA. So what we did is we replaced all the cracked panels and the settled panels. But, um, what, we, we didn't have the money to remove all the signal poles and the other light poles that are in the sidewalk. And to primarily fix the driveways because that driveway cross slope, you know, that has to be addressed for ADA. And so I think that when we come to a street with sidewalks, you know, we need to take a look at that and try to do that. But it, but we're going to be getting into the design process and actually figuring out what that cost would be. And I don't know that it's going to be, I mean, some streets, it may be expensive more than others. And so I think we're going to have to look at those, you know, streets and determine those costs. But we haven't walked those projects and calculated that, or watched, walked those streets and calculated those costs yet.
Right. So if you go back, if you just think about that in terms of the table that we saw a few slides ago, there's a column that will be added as we go through and do that, you know, in additional in the field analysis. And that will be whatever ADA's improvements would be required in connection with that particular treatment type.
So I would, I wasn't planning to do it in the table. I was planning that when we get a project, you know, when we start to hone in on the project, we really kind of take a look at that, what that would be. Because that's going to change, you know, with each street. So I mean, we could put, but it's going to be a lot.
And I, I wasn't saying put it in the table. I'm just saying it, it's a cost that's not factored in yet. So when you're looking at your thirty nine point two million dollars.
Correct.
There will be additional costs related to ADA considerations.
Yes. Okay. So stormwater is one of our biggest factors that could influence the program costs. And we kind of talked about, you know, water is not a street's friend. And so, um, that's why it's so important to have appropriate curb and gutter to seal the streets so we're not having water get in it and to have stormwater pipe, you know, that is in good repair. So it moves the water away from the street so it doesn't start seeping into the base. And so, um, as we, um, we've done the BHC stormwater inventory repair and we, we presented some preliminary information to you last time to show that, I mean, it's a big number and it's scary, but it's a forty eight million replacement cost. But that would be over a fifty year life cycle. So I think we have an opportunity with street projects to take a look and determine how to fix stormwater as we go. So we have an aging deteriorated system, um, but we do know what our pipe ratings are now. Based on the county rating, it's one to five. So, um, three point two is fair and up is what the county will, if we apply for a grant, they will give us fifty percent construction costs up to a certain amount, similar to the cars program where we submit a project, they usually give us, you know, fifty percent for that project. But we would submit some projects and they would give us fifty percent construction replacement cost. They won't give us costs or, or money to fund new pipe, but, or to upsize a pipe, but to replace what's there. So I think we have a real good opportunity to start addressing some of our, um, stormwater needs with projects. So what we found out that, um, when I first drove in Mission, I thought, oh my gosh, we don't have stormwater anywhere. We're in trouble because if you drive down the streets, you don't see, always see a lot of inlets. But, um, even though our existing system isn't to APWA standards, which is the prevailing standard that's used to design, you know, streets and storm and everything, it does generally, there's stormwater at the bottom of the hill. So with the topography and our little sub-bases that I'm going to show you on the next slide and our topography, that water starts at the top of the hill and then flows down. And there's usually, um, some kind of stormwater pipe. So, um, we do have, you know, I think with some improvements, we can really make a difference in our stormwater. We don't really have a lot of major street or house flooding. What we have more is some localized ponding at intersections and some sump pump issues. So the water comes down the hill. If it were APWA designed, it would collect at the top of the hill. So there would be less water coming down at the road. But at the intersections is where, especially if it's flat, it kind of sits there and you start to see that deteriorated pavement. So we've got that and it ices in the winter. And then we have some sump pump, you know, concerns where there's so much water coming out on the road, it has the same issue. So that's kind of what we've seen for stormwater. So taking a look at that, we looked at three different criteria and five representative areas in the city to try to determine what would be a good approach for stormwater. One thing that's important, why it is important to look at stormwater before we start selecting streets is that if we're going to put in any new system, you know, you have to start, start at the downstream end. And so that could, um, determine how we select streets and what order we go in. So that's why it was important to kind of get a philosophy on how we want to handle stormwater. So the repair only would be obviously replacing either the fairs, you know, the three point twos, fours and fives, or the fours and fives, depending on the money we have and the matching leverage funds from the county. But not adding anything new. The minimal improvement would be let's get out into the neighborhood. Let's take a look at where our issues are and let's install, you know, what we need to install. But we're not just automatically putting in, you know, the additional pipes and inlets that would be required of us if we were putting in a new street. And that would be for APWA. So if we had APWA and you're going to see a couple of the, um, slides to show that you would be extending the pipe and the inlets up the hill. So what we're recommending, and I'll kind of go through two of those exercises of why we're recommending it, is that, um, because of our existing situation where we don't have a lot of major street, you know, flooding, we have more localized ponding. Um, and we've gotten to see that our systems are in place. So we really have the latitude to take a look at what's there and decide, you know, maybe these are where we need improvements. And so, um, normally I don't want to waive any criteria, but I, you know, in working with our stormwater engineer, that's, um, something that we think a cost effective approach would be to go with the minimal improvement. So we're addressing the needs as we see them during the, you know, during our design. And, you know, before we do a design, we want to meet with, get some input from the public. They live on the street, you know, are there any issues that we're not, that aren't apparent to us that we can address with this project? And so, um, I know that, um, the city of Shawnee uses this approach too. And I think that that would be a good approach, especially because similar to sidewalks, we have a lot of costs and let's try to maintain what we have. And if we need to add new, let's do it. But, you know, let's just don't do it just to, you know, install the criteria, even though it is good criteria to have. So we're recommending no one size fits all, that we would get into the neighborhood in the street and we take a look at what we think our needs are and recommend that. And, you know, really depending on the budget we have available, if we only have, you know, three hundred thousand or five hundred, we may have to pick projects to leverage those funds, um, which you have to submit the year before. So, you know, there's a process to go through, but that's kind of what we're recommending.
And what? Yeah, I had one question related to that. I know you were saying we don't have major flooding issues now. When we're sort of doing this, especially if we're looking at a ten year plan or longer, will we be considering some of the modeling around changing weather patterns and climate change? And if we will have more intense flooding events, would, you know, the plan that we're creating accommodate for that? That sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that everybody's been talking about, that there is increased water. And so I think, you know, when we get into our design phase, that's something that we would need to consider with our engineers on how to make sure that that's factored in. They're talking about changing the criteria even, you know, to address that. And so I think, you know, a combination of using our engineers and looking at what's there to make sure that we're, you know, trying to plan for now and the future.
Celia, what, what is the, right now as it stands with our stormwater pipes, what percentage of them are literally at the failure rating?
Oh, I think.
We'll come back. How about this? I'll turn off my video and I'll go find the stormwater map that we got, right? That's what we're going to look at, what we shared in August. Is that right, Celia?
Well, we have a table.
I'll go get the table, see if I can find that and come back to it.
Okay, we're getting ready to present that in an upcoming section, but, um, I can't remember the, but we did break it down to show what we had, um, but I don't remember the numbers. So you can go get the map or do you want, you want to talk about it when we present it at the next work, at an upcoming work session?
How about this? How about, we'll see if we can find the table. I'll send it out when I send out, when we send out kind of the really large spreadsheet on the streets that we've been talking about. So we'll get it out in the next couple of days and then we'll focus more on that.
And and since we're talking about that, we've, we got the draft report, we just need to review it and figure out, you know, if there needs to be any changes and then we can give that final report and more, more of the data to, to, to all of you. So that you have more information. Last time we presented an overall, you know, look at it, but now we're going to have more information to present to you. Okay, so what we found is that in, you know, we worked with our consultant. And they said it's about a fifty percent cost reduction to install stormwater with street projects. Because as opposed to standalone, because if you have standalone, you're replacing the pavement and the sidewalk and the grading. And and the seed and the sod, whereas with the street project, you know, you're already designing the street. You're already putting down pavement, so it saves about fifty percent. So it it it's cost effective if we can incorporate it into the project. And then, as I mentioned, our next step, and I know Laura is going to talk a lot more about budget and scenarios. But if we can set aside a budget for these street projects, knowing that we also have, you know, sinkholes and things that come up. And but we can plan ahead. And so we're designing the year before and we're planning on county funds, you know, that's a really good way to leverage our projects. And address our stormwater needs. Okay, so. I know that these maps were sent to you. And to start off, the reason we asked Olson to take a look at what are the drainage basins in the city? Because when we helped, like I said, when we were looking at pipes and how to pick streets and looking at downstream ends. Kind of had to get an idea of where stormwater flowed. And I did have one map that kind of showed little arrows that show which way, you know, these little basins show. But basically that blue squiggly line is the ridge line. So everything on the north side drains, you know, north and and it drains into those streams. There may be some more streams that aren't shown on this, but this is kind of what the county shows. So I know that there's more streams in our city that they're just showing the more major ones. And so then on the south side, it drains south and southeast. And so within those little sub-basins, you know, you may have drainage going a certain way. So like here, you've got the stream, so you've got, you know, some going that way and some going that way. And so this area probably goes the, you know, in general this way, but some of the stormwater may go down that way. So when I was looking at a potential ten year scenario, kind of took a look at some of that. To try to determine how stormwater flows and how we can incorporate it into the pipe. But so we have this map and then we looked at five areas that we hoped were representative to try to get an idea on what the criteria we should use. And I know that this is a little bit difficult with all the different colors. But Mill Haven was one of the areas that we looked at because it's a large standalone neighborhood. And so these blue lines right through there are the ridge lines. And so the water goes that way. And then this area, you know, I think it primarily drains down to Beverly, down to Beverly. And then it flows down and gets into this stream down here. And so we've got some separate drainage basins going on here. And so the colors are the different structures and pipe based on our stormwater data and the county data. You know, the inventory that BHC performed plus what we already had in the county. So if we were to do the repair only, we would repair these yellows if we, if we had the money for the fairs. But the the oranges, which are the poor and the reds that are immediate repair, meaning they're, you know, close to failure. So we'd replace those. As you can see, that's the only stormwater that's in this neighborhood. And so if we were to do the minimal improvement, we'd take a look during design. But, you know, probably extend this pipe up because of this intersection is usually where we see the issues where the water comes down the hill. So probably something like that. But of course, there could be more that we'd have to look at in design. If we did APWA, we're, you know, it's based on number of inlets. You know, capturing a certain amount of water on the road, no more than seven inches, et cetera. So we'd be extending our inlets and our pipe all the way up the street. And the same here would be extended down. So it it'd be expensive. So based on this, you know, if we don't have any major issues on these upper reaches. We would recommend the minimal improvement approach here. Then I've got a number of other areas, but I know that this is one, Hillary, you're well acquainted with this one. And so this is the area forty ninth and Knoll on the northeast edge of Mission. And this is Outlook Road. So what happens here is the water drains off through this green pipe. It goes through a concrete channel and then it just dumps out to the street. So if you drive the street, you see all this water coming out. In fact, the owners called us and said, is there some kind of a leak? And we checked in and it's not, it's just a lot of water coming out and it's really damaged the streets. So this would be a pipe that we would install to address an immediate need. So that would be a minimal, what we're calling the minimal improvement approach. As well as replacing, you know, any of the threes, fours and fives. If we were to do APWA, we'd also add in this little stretch on reeds because we'd go up the hill and install that. But really the issue with reeds is down in this area. So we think that this minimal improvement approach is a really good approach. So I didn't go through all five areas because you have them in your packages if you have any questions. But Olson took a look at each of those areas and they based it on broad unit costs. So you can see the repair cost versus the minimal and versus the APWA. So. I calculated, for example, area two, which is Mill Haven. The total cost of street improvements to minimal improvement. It would be at about an additional twelve percent to the project. So while it is an extra cost, you know, it's not so much that we can't afford it, especially with the county funding. Although there's going to be some additional pipe, you know, that's going to include the repairs plus the additional pipe we need to do. And area four that we just looked at, I think stormwater would be about, for the minimal improvement, would be about ten percent of the entire area. So we feel like, you know, this is within our means and, you know, we're just going to have to determine the money we have. And try to, you know, pick and choose where we make our improvements based on our budget. And I know Laura is going to be taking a look at that and now in an upcoming sessions to talk more about that. So took a look at stormwater and kind of, you know, that's our recommendation is the minimal improvement. And so now we're to the point where we've talked about some of those factors that go into it. And now we're to the point where let's get to the meat of it and let's pick some streets and let's figure out what we can do. So at the previous work session, I know that some of you mentioned that we've really neglected local streets. And what can we do? Let's, let's put money, let's carve out some money for local streets and potentially keep that separate from arterials. Because arterials are generally fifty percent funded by cars. So let's have a focus. So two million dollars may be a good scenario for us to look at. Before I talk about the two million dollar scenario that, that we've developed. And it's in a draft form and needs some work too. But last time, Stan Tech generated, you know, the PCI curve. Where we looked at the different budget scenarios, if we have one million or if we have two million, here's what happens to the PCI over ten years. And that that's based on a cost benefit program generated scenario. So what happens is the, is the program automatically starts developing this cost benefit analysis. And it results in the highest PCI. So what they, what it does is it selects longer road segments. It it focuses on let's get all the arterials with the higher traffic volume roads done first. So it, it had all the arterials being done in one, two and, you know, year one, two and three. And then it also looks at, if you do the lesser expensive roads, you know, that don't require as much treatment. You're going to have a lot more money to touch other streets. And so that's a good cost benefit ratio. But we can't really do that here in Mission because, you know, we're leveraging our cars funding. And so that's why we've looked at some different scenarios. And so there's all types of scenarios we can do, but this two million local street scenario that I'm going to show you, we really kind of came up with that. First of all, as we know, three percent of the Mission streets have insufficient asphalt depth and require base repair. So we really need to spend that additional money just to bring us up to baseline where some of the newer cities, you know, their streets are already at. You know, the, the minimum requirement and they can focus on, you know, doing the less treatments. It don't cost as much because they already have, you know, their asphalt depth appropriately. And potentially have done some more asphalt base repairs, although not always. And so this scenario focuses on repairs of the local streets. There are some commercial collectors that are being done, but kind of local streets in the first coming years. And looking at the lowest PCIs for the first ten years, kind of going down the list of the lowest PCIs, which is going to cost a lot more. We're touching a lot less streets at first because they cost more, but we're fixing them right so that there's less costly maintenance over time. So if you compare that, the PCI over ten years to the cost benefit, it's going to be lower over time. But it begins to address that backlog of big streets that need this full asphalt depth. You know, there's scenarios that we could do that focus on, let's just do the chip seals or the U-bass that hardly have base repair. And we'd get more done at first, but then we still have that backlog that we need to address. And and, you know, those sitting there are going to require more repair over time. So it could end up that we have a higher PCI in the first years, but then in the later years, you know, we don't see that. So unfortunately, we're unique, not so unique from a lot of other older cities. But, you know, we've got that baseline that we need to bring our streets to. So I think this scenario would potentially align with the residents' perception and expectations. Because if we come out and say, okay, well, we want to renew our sales tax and we're going to do these streets. And some residents are going to say, well, why are you doing that good street? They just had a treatment a lot long ago and look at my street, how bad it is. So I think, you know, this helps align with that perception of, you know, my street's a lot worse. Can we get those done? And so that's the scenario we tried to address. And then, like I said, arterials would be funded separately and that's part of that budget discussion that I know Laura is going to talk about is, you know, what's the appropriate funding? What can Mission, you know, what can we fund to address our streets, both local and arterial?
Celia, if the asphalt depth is increased as it should be, based on your expertise. And you've been great with doing that on residential streets, at least in my ward too. If it, if it gets to the right correct depth, the longevity of the street is much more proficient, is it not?
It is.
So you spend some now to get a greater use out of it. And it's an easier sell to me like that. I don't know how we go back on why it wasn't put there to begin with, but that's another story.
You know, I think we're not alone though. A lot of the older cities, you know. We, I don't, I don't know if, I'm not saying there wasn't a criteria because I'm not really sure back in the day. But, you know, that's not uncommon for the older streets. The newer cities, you know, they've had these requirements for a while. But the older cities, you know, a lot of times they were just installed, you know, to whatever depth. So, but yeah, the whole point is bringing them up to where they can be fixing that base. So we're not just putting another surface treatment over it, but we're really getting down to the bottom. And so now we've got the framework we need so that our next treatment is going to be a lot less costly.
And I think one of the things that we've been talking about internally is, and, you know, we're, we keep showing you PCI graphs. And we keep talking about PCI and I think PCI is important. And it's an important tool that we use to, to prioritize any program going forward. But it may not be the language that we use. You know, in communicating to the community, what, you know, we, we don't necessarily want to guarantee this dramatic increase in, in your PCI. What we're doing and what we're proposing and sort of building now, and this is one of the assumptions that we wanted to test with you all tonight. Is, is again, as Celia said, we're improving that structure and that framework. So that the people that come after us hopefully don't have some of the same obstacles and hurdles that, that you all, we all are, are facing today. So it, it doesn't mean we're not making a wise, in fact, I think it's, it's making a wiser investment. In the overall street network than just focusing on getting an overall PCI rating, you know. Shooting up the graph as fast as you can.
Okay, so. This budget network, like I said, the PCI doesn't go quite as much up as if we had the cost. As if we had the cost benefit graph. But the, the, the proposal I'm about to show you shows it kind of about maintaining even. And we really haven't included what we're going to be doing with arterials. I mean, we did run, run this with the five, you know, the five year program that we already have. And I think the PCI at twenty twenty five went up about five or six. But then we didn't have the ten year mapped out yet. So we'd like to develop that ten year arterial program too, to kind of see with, if we put in so much for locals. And we put in so much for arterials, you know, what will that PCI get? You see that if we don't do anything, how far the PCI drops. And so, I mean, this is a good tool to use. It's already dropped a little bit from twenty twenty because we didn't do any streets. And so it's gone from a fifty six down a little bit. But, you know, we can start changing that by investing some funds. And I definitely like to see, have more than two million dollars. I mean, we could really see that graph go up, but, you know, we, we can only do what we do. So I think that's something that, you know, we'll, Laura will talk about and will be a decision, you know, later on. So, okay, so this is a very preliminary map. And I, and I'm not saying that this is the final product, but it's something that shows a preliminary program. Based on the two million dollars for locals only and, and some collectors. And so what we did is, like I said, I started at the top of the PCI list of the worst and tried to do that. And really, for twenty twenty one, it's difficult because we want to get streets done. We have about one to one point one million dollars. But we, you know, ideally, we design the year before, we get the program, we get the streets bid in January. And we're going to get the best cost before the contractors have work. But we're kind of, you know, we can still get work in twenty twenty one. But I tried to focus on streets in twenty twenty one that we could get done that didn't have a lot of stormwater. Excuse me, that didn't have a lot of additional work. So I looked at the U-bass treatment project of streets with the worst PCIs. And Britt and I came out and we kind of drove around to say, okay. And, you know, sometimes the PCI, you look at it and streets degrade over time. So you may see one street and say, well, the next one's a lot worse than that. Why do you have this PCI that's so much different? But so that's why we tried, you know, we tried to do the visual test on some of them. We didn't get it completely done. But that's how we based twenty twenty one is taking a look at the U-bass with the worst PCI that we could also get done this year. And so that's kind of what we're showing preliminarily here. And there's only one point one million dollars available. And these costs would include design, inspection, fifteen percent contingency. And in twenty twenty one, we'd recommend designing for twenty one and twenty two. So we can plan out stormwater funds. So we're, we don't have as much money in twenty twenty one. And so that's why there's a little less to show. But that's how we develop the twenty twenty one scenario. And then we also showed the crack seals because that's really going to bring up our PCI as well. That's something that our crews can do. In fact, they're on Johnson Drive doing it now and it's really going to protect our streets. But we can do that out of our budget. So we just wanted to show, I know a lot of people don't always get excited about crack seal. But it really is a treatment that we need to do for our streets. So for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five, I mean, as we dial this in, you know, we, we're going to. I kind of had a year designated, but I really wanted to go back and, you know, like I said, take a look at stormwater and sequencing and how to leverage funds. And when we know how much money we have, we can kind of pick the order of twenty twenty two through twenty twenty five. So at some point we'll have those in by year, but want to, you know, dial that in with the stormwater costs and the sequencing. And really probably, you know, we've done this, I call it kind of a paper exercise where we've done it based on the PCIs on paper. But also to get out then and take a look and say, hey, does this really make sense? And Britt and I have done some of that. We haven't done it all. So those twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five. And Britt and I have done some of that. We haven't done it all. So those 2022 to 2025 kind of tried to group projects together, you know, I would have liked to group even more together, but also, you know, we have poor streets all over. So trying to, you know, make sure that we have, we're touching all parts of town. You notice the west side of town doesn't have as much, the streets, they're a little rough. You know, they, we have a lot of chip seals, but they're in pretty good condition. So we have some, but we really, with this approach, we tried to focus on the worst ones. So there's not as many streets, you know, touched in those years as well as in that little east quadrant. So this is subject to change, but wanted to show you, just give you an idea. And then the 26 to 2030, you know, still working down the list, trying to group a little bit as we could, you know, more major, looking at stormwater and together. So this kind of gives you an idea of what we could do. What we could do with $2 million.
Celia, and it's hard for me sort of to hold the PSI map in my head and this one at the same time. But it does look like from this, at the $2 million dollar level, we are talking about still a lot of residential streets that won't be touched at all in the next decade. That's right, right?
Right. So if we could find more money, you know, so if you take that, what was that number, the new number, the 30 something divided by 10, you know, you could, I think it was 39. You could say, okay, if you had 3.9 million dollars a year, and granted, there's going to be inflation and degradation. You could touch every single street in the city, you know, theoretically. Can we, can we afford to that? And so, you know, if we don't have that, this is what we can do. And then, so it's, it's a budget scenario and how much money we can afford. And I did talk to StanTech about that because I'm like, wow, I, I mean, I want to touch all these streets. And he said, you know, a lot of cities, they just don't have all the money to do it. So, you know, some cities can find that money, but a lot of cities, you know, are like us where we're, they're really trying to do the best they can. So, I mean, I think it comes down to what we can, what we decide in the end that we can designate for streets.
Celia, as a follow-up to Solly's question, is this $2 million funding scenario based on no change to current mill levy? No change to anything that we currently have revenue wise?
Yes. And I'm, I'm going to burst, I'm going to burst everybody's bubble in just a minute. So. Yeah. I mean, and what's difficult with this map, and it's hard to combine them. It, it, we're trying to figure out how we get, I mean, what you have to remember is if we said, you know, what are the streets that we've touched or who, that have had some type of treatment in the last, you know, five to 10 years, so that you were looking at, you know, a 20 year period. It's not entirely fair to say, because some of these streets that aren't highlighted in a 10 year program aren't highlighted because we've touched them recently, more recently, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Trying to figure out what, you know, over a longer term horizon and trying to get some of these maps over time to marry up is one of the things that, that we're looking at. But I think that's going to be a really important communication piece to the public to say, you know, the last time we treated your street. Cause, because people forget, it feels like it was forever ago and it might not have been forever ago that, you know, that we did that work. And what you'll see is that a lot of the arterial streets, um, you know, are, would light up in that map, if you will, because, and, and as Celia mentioned early in the presentation, when you look at, for example, chip seal projects that we've done, which is, is because of that lack of depth and our inability to mill and overlay for the last 10 years, we've done, the majority of the work has been chip seal, which although may not feel like an improvement on the street, has protected and is allowing us to, you know, to, to buy some time and to continue to extend the life of those streets. So that is definitely on our to-do list is to try to, to bring together, you know, some, some version. Well, I don't know what the appropriate time horizon is for that. And then, I don't know, Celia, are you finished? Do you want me to jump a little bit more into money or?
Does anybody have any questions on this? Like I said, it has work to do. So if you don't see a certain street or you're comparing like, why that one? I mean, there's still some work to do, but we wanted to, this was based on going down the list with the PCI. So Laura is correct that, some of these other streets have been touched or haven't deteriorated as much. And that would be great to show that so that everybody sees that. But, um, if anybody has any questions, we go over that. And if not, we go into the fun budget discussion that Laura is going to talk about.
I, just a quick follow-up and, and I know the, the money is a big piece of this. Um, and so I look forward to Laura's portion, but, I am curious and there's been some conversation around prioritization in regard to wards. And, um, I, I'd really like to see, um, you know, if we're going to go with the projects in highest priority based on PCI or based on when their last treatments are or whatever it was. You know, I'd really like to have something to share with constituents about, you know, even like an Excel workbook that's like, here's the last treatment date for your street. And this is why, you know, I, I think if we're not going to follow PCI and we're going to go off of, you know, more kind of records and, and just a little bit different approach, it all makes sense to me. But having something tangible to lean on, I think is going to be, um, important for me to be able to relay to folks who may not fully understand that reasoning. And then as a follow-up, I think that, um, that will also help me better understand, you know, why, you know, Ward one has fewer streets in the pipeline for the next 10 years, despite it being, you know, the oldest portion of Mission. So it, you know, I, just helping build the narrative for me, a little bit more. And again, I know we're, you know, baseline here and, and there's more details to come, but that's, that's how I'm feeling.
And can I, can I just state, just based on my longevity on the council, we've had several issues where we might look at contingencies on this particular plan because we had several properties in Ward one, actually off 49th Street, where we had either a fault or a sinkhole. And I mean, we're talking $35,000, $40,000 a pop to fix some of those things that you really can't plan on. So resident by resident, street by street, we may have issues that crop up that we can't plan for.
And let me, I, let me make a quick clarification or I'll forget it if I don't say it now. So I think internally, Hillary, we're going to use PCI. So, so this 10 year draft program that Celia built, it's not perfect, um, but it starts with the streets with the lowest PCI ratings and works, works from there. So in terms of, of what a map or where the streets are located, we will still be using PCI. Well, that's one of, I mean, that's how we've sort of built that. And what, what I think I was trying to communicate and not very effectively was in, in the past, what we've tried to communicate is we're going to make this investment and you're going to see this dramatic increase public in the overall PCI rating on your network. That's the piece that's going to be different as we start to understand and really address the full depth, you know, the magnitude of the full depth reconstructions that we know we have in front of us. So we will still, it will absolutely be a, a critical measuring stick as we do prioritization. It's just, we can't promise that that investment, you know, in the short term is going to have this, you know, skyrocketing upward curve on a PCI graph for the entire network, if that makes sense.
And, and then it is going to be a little complicated to try to explain exactly, because I didn't go straight down the list. I started at the top, but you know, there were some, it's like, oh, that's a lot of stormwater or, you know, okay, we, that's a commercial area. Or, you know, it'd be, make more sense to combine. So like on 55th Street, that PCI isn't based on the numbers. It's not the very highest, but if you drive that street and take a look at it with all the different cuts from Water One, it, the PCI is different. So there was some of that. And then really trying to group, you know, if we can do 55th at one time. So, and then, you know, like I said, some of it, okay, we probably need to build this one first for stormwater and I need to do more of that. So it is going to be general, but if you just go down the list, I mean, it's going to be like, well, why didn't you do that one? And so we have the reasons and, and we'll define that more. And, and you know, trying to get coverage in all areas, there are streets bad everywhere. There are some that aren't as worse. And so, you know, the other thing we could do is if we don't want to go strictly down the list, you know, we could try to do, you know, because every, there's no bad decisions. Every street, every work that we do is needed. You know, we could kind of focus in some of those areas and do the lesser treatments too, you know, but this approach kind of tried to work down from the, from, from it based on the paper, PCI.
Celia, I had a question too. This is Trent. When we were looking earlier at your stormwater, um, area on Outlook, uh, for example, there at the top of the graph, like I see here that there's blue that's highlighted on that work as well for the streets. I, one thing I'm still kind of trying to understand is would that work, for example, when you were talking about laying the stormwater pipe to, as, as sort of like the bare minimum fix we could do there? Would that work coincide with any potential work that we'd be doing here on the street reconstruction too? I, I guess that's one thing I'm still trying to kind of like grab my head around, or would it, would it be timed so that we're not like tearing up the street? You know, a year or two after we had fixed it or?
We'd start with the stormwater first and then get the street done later on that year and try to do it, you know, with one project all at once.
Okay. You want to go to the next slide? And I don't have a lot of detail this evening, on the budget, but let's talk a little bit about kind of, you know, where, where we are. So as Celia said, if we just generally take this, the snapshot that we have of overall program cost of $39.2 million and said, you know, if we wanted to fix everything, because that, that program, correct, Celia, includes both the residential streets and the arterial streets. So that's every street segment. So 3.9 million, you know, in bad math, $3.9 million over 10 years would allow us to, to do some, that treatment on, on the streets.
With the cars, that doesn't count the 50% car's funding, but yes, correct.
Yes. Now, what that doesn't include, so excluded from that, that assume, that doesn't include the big cars projects like the complete reconstruction of Johnson Drive, correct? You know, which is a, at this point, a $12 million project or, um, so there's, there's some other pieces of this big arterial program that we're having to work through to say, okay, those, those cars projects that we've anticipated over the next five years and potentially, you know, maybe the next 10 years. How much funding does it really take to do that? And so we're building out. So the next time we get together, we're going to be able, I think, to show you in much more detail, kind of that budget on your arterial. I mean, one of the things, um, that we want to confirm tonight is that you still want us to continue to build those out separately. And I will tell you, I think it, from our perspective, I think that makes sense. And, and part of going as far as we have so far in building out a program, 10 year program on the residential streets is to really, I didn't want to start limiting, what we might be able to see and what options, right? Because what I've heard you all say to us is kind of give us a plan and then let us work backward from there. Let's don't, let's don't place some limitations on ourselves, you know, right out of the gate. So, um, again, I think this, this plan will have to change based on a number of factors. And then we will be building that stand, that separate sort of parallel arterial, um, plan and what, what that's going to have to look like. Right now, um, you know, if, let's just say we never had to touch another arterial street. Again, right now, when we look at what we're generating in mills dedicated to streets, street sales tax and gas tax revenues, we're bringing in about 1.9 million dollars a year. So you're, you're sort of within, you know, spitting distance, if you will, of that $2 million mark. Now, what that doesn't account for and part of, again, if we go back to the first part of our conversation this evening, we'll, we'll be carving out some portions of those dollars or thinking about appropriate amounts. If we're going to do a standalone sidewalk program, if we're going to address streetlights separately, you know, we'll need to do some of those kinds of things. But, but where we stand today, we're, we're in the ballpark of that $2 million figure, right? So, um, that's kind of, that was another kind of easy starting point and to pick the $2 million number. So that number is going to increase, obviously, when we start to add the arterial streets into that. And so, once we sort of flush this out a little bit more and build that arterial program, then we're going to be able to show you more of that total number, right? And, and what do we need? And then I think we have to have the conversations about, you know, what is that number? What is our appetite for that number in terms of looking at, increasing our funding, um, or renewal of a sales, of a sales tax? The other thing that we'll start to layer into that, which we'll have to be careful with, and we talked about this at our August meeting, is Celia's $2 million program or $2 million a year doesn't anticipate that we issued any debt to accomplish that. That is, this is entirely a pay as you go program, the way that we've got it laid out tonight. And, um, you know, I think we talked last time about as we start to get more detail around these things, it will, it may make more sense for us to think about packages or opportunities to leverage more work by using debt. But we're going to have to, you know, be with a sales, the sale, street sales tax expiring in 2022, we're going to have to be very thoughtful about, you know, the timing potentially of, of those kinds of packages. So I think we still have time as we move into design and all of these things. That's, that's the good thing. I think we have, still have time to, to work on these pieces of the puzzle and bring those together for you over the next several months and still be positioned to, you know, to get in front of the community and solicit some feedback and engage kind of the appetite for all of this going forward. So kind of our next steps. And I think what I would ask is we had tentatively said, let's, you know, let's continue having work sessions on this. We had talked about holding that date on October 28th as a, as a another second work session on the street program, which, if you all are amenable to that, we would, would certainly work toward that. So we'll continue to build out the funding scenarios. I think if we have general agreement that kind of our initial recommendation with how to match up stormwater and the approach of stormwater repair and replacement on the streets will allow us again, to, to get more refined, not only in the 10 year program, um, but to start to think about, some of those other, you know, how, how we add and how we continue to prioritize. We'll be creating that separate, um, program and funding scenarios for the arterial streets. Again, evaluating the funding scenarios, how we generate the revenue or consider debt financing options to accomplish whatever those goals and objectives are. Talking again about, um, you know, what level of funding could we or should we, or do we want to be setting aside for sidewalks? And again, sidewalks in this instance would be new sidewalks that don't exist. And then curbs for streets that are outside of the, of the 10 year program. So there are some opportunities to do standalone sort of curb and gutter replacement programs. And oftentimes I think that the, a resident's perception of a poor quality street has a lot to do with the condition of the curb. So crumbling curbs, um, and gutters, we can do a lot, you know, and, and we're sort of working ahead. It's, it sort of helps us work ahead a little bit. You know, as well, so you can address some of the, the resident perceptions and concerns sometimes, but it also just preps us for, for that point at which we would be coming back through to do some additional kind of treatment on the street. So we'll be working on, um, additional pieces of that and then moving to get final report and recommendations presented and to a point where, um, you know, we think we're ready to go out and solicit, have engaged, really intentionally engage the public. Obviously, these are all public meetings, but intentionally sort of engage the public in, in that recommended plan. So I wish I had more to share with you on budget tonight, but that's about, you know, kind of what we've had the opportunity to, to dive into. And I think, other thoughts, questions?
I think this has been very helpful and I think that we're on the right track.
Same.
Laura, I have a question. Is there any way possible, and this may be asking way too much, so feel free to put me in my place. Is there any way possible over the next couple of months? Is there any way possible over the next couple of months to establish a two or three-page scenario of where we have, in the last nine to 10 months, lost revenue on the community center, sales tax? Holistically, where we have kind of gone into arrears on the tax side and fee side?
Yes. So last month at your legislative meeting, we presented kind of a revised interim, monthly interim financial report. So you will have another one of those at your legislative meeting, so your October 21st meeting. That's kind of been our target. We can't get the month closed generally, in, in time for the committee meeting on the first Wednesday of each month. And so last month, we had talked about kind of targeting that legislative meeting. And that gives, we, we will include that in the packet. I can address and highlight that under my city administrator's report, and it, and it makes it a little bit more visible and accessible to the public. And so that report absolutely will have, and we talked a little bit about this last month, kind of highlighting where we are in those, you know, in, in those areas. And we will do that again at the October meeting, and then again in November and December and, and every month sort of going forward. I can tell you today where we sit and where we sat with, you know, last month's financials. Property tax, we're, we're on target. I mean, we're going to hit our budgeted figures with anticipated property tax revenues. So far, the, the sales tax trend through July of this year has been absolutely on target with our budget. So we are not seeing, we, we built a budget with, I think ultimately about a 10% reduction in sales tax. We're not seeing that. So we're hopeful that that will, you know, will continue to hold through the balance of this year and into 2021. So sales tax is trending right where we would want it to be. Community center revenues, no surprises where we've taken the largest hit. We had planned to be at about 50% of that, and we won't be there. So we'll go through all of that in more detail, but that will be something that we'll highlight each month as a part of that presentation of the monthly interim financials.
Thanks. Laura, I just wanted to ask timeline for the Direction Finder and how any of those questions will fit into this process?
Well, and I'm assuming Brian is still on. Part of the timing of the Direction Finder is going to be kind of aligning with, and talking with Confluence about how they want to use it to meet, you know, meet some of their needs. So I think there will be an opportunity, the, the challenge with Direction Finder and the leadership team was kind of, has been working back through previous Direction Finder surveys, and we've been having some conversations about what do we think you all, or what do we think we all collectively might want to, to look at? We have a very limited opportunity to add those types of questions. So in 2015, we had the benefit of doing two surveys with ETC. And one of, we were doing sort of, sort of an internal, working on an internal update to the comp plan that died on the vine, and then the park master plan. And so we did kind of a, a pre-survey that was statistically valid with ETC to test comp plan-type questions and parks and recreation question. And then based on the results of that survey, we were then able to sort of focus in, in the actual Direction Finder survey, you know, on some specific, some specific theories that we wanted to test, and particularly some significant, or specific thresholds in terms of what residents would be willing to pay in, in the case of the 2015 survey specifically related to infrastructure improvements. And so that's one of the things that we're looking at. We, we need to work sort of in concert with Confluence. There could be an opportunity, if we feel like there's additional data and more questions that we want to ask, we, we can certainly get some pricing from, you know, ETC about doing some additional surveying as well. So we're, we're kind of looking at what options we have for that. And I think as we move into this program, it will, and through this program, it will help us sort of determine how many questions we feel like we need to ask through that survey versus, I mean, a variety of other data collection methods that we might have.
One thing I did want to mention is that the neighborhood that we talked about, and I'm trying to remember off of Lamar, you know, we brought that forward, they had a request for private to public. So that was something that we talked about. When we get this street program done, we're going to revisit that. So I just wanted to put that back on, you know, eventually that we do need to get back into that and decide whether we're going to include that, and then that would be incorporated into this program.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
Yeah.
Well, I think two things. So there's the Lincolnshire, which is, Lincolnshire, which is already now a public street, and then the Summit condominium. So we've got both of those that we'll need to circle back and have some additional discussion around.
We also had an issue that's still outstanding regarding signage along Lamar, where it's a dead end or a cul-de-sac, and you can't get through for the signage to be put on the other side of the road so people don't go to the street and then figure it out after they're in there. So that, that's still an outstanding issue.
I know we talked about it, but I, did we, I guess, I didn't know if we had decided for, I know we had sent that information, but if we decided to do that, we can definitely do that. Laura, we can talk about that, because?
Yeah, we can follow up with that. I know we had sent your recommend, we, we had forwarded your recommendations, but I don't think we had landed on anything specific.
And, and just to get back, I know this is, that signage, that's something that I definitely want to look at, because we've got a lot of un-uniform signs, and so that's something on the list that we want to take a look at overall.
Okay, so I, we've heard a couple of, we're headed in the right direction, keep moving forward. Obviously, we know we've got a lot more detail and blanks to fill in, so, but we wanted to just test some of those assumptions before we got too far down the path and had to completely reverse direction. So, and, and I think, you know, huge compliments and kudos to Celia and to Brent, who I know have spent a lot of hours over the last, you know, several months trying to bring all of this together. And when I hit send on some of the other spreadsheets and things that they've been working with, it'll make your head hurt, and you'll thank them again for, for doing that.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Good.
And sometimes it's overwhelming, but as Celia said, there's no bad investment in our streets. And so I think it's important as we move through this to, to be encouraged, not discouraged, that we have you as a council who is very invested in, you know, in doing this in a, in a wise manner that has both a short-term and a long-term focus, because that's going to pay dividends for our community in the future. And I think that is all we have this evening, unless anybody has any other questions.
Move to John.
All right.
Bye.
Mayor, can I, can I make, take advantage of this opportunity, like a shameless plug for our kickoff meeting tomorrow night with the Conference of Land Use Plan? We're going to have our first public meeting tomorrow night at 6:30, and it's going to be held virtually through Zoom. And we're inviting everybody in the community, as many people as we can get to participate, the more the merrier. And we're going to, this has really become an opportunity to view the website that's going to be associated with the project and to learn how that works. And that website will be up and running for about two months, but the consultants will kind of take us through Conference of Land Use Plan Update 101, do a little bit of engagement and introduce the public to that website. So that is 6:30 tomorrow night, virtual Zoom. Be there, be square. Bring your friends, family, neighbors, the more the merrier. Thank you.
See you, everybody.
Bye.